Want to welcome you to our live stream presentation of our Strongsville United Methodist Building Expansion Town Hall. And welcome to those of you who have come. There's going to be three presenters. First, Dave Thomas is going to come and talk about the actual building options. There will be four. And then Jeff Shear will come up and give some financial implications of all four options. And then I'll do a very quick thing at the very end on process and where we're going to go from here. So if you're at home and you have questions, we want you to write them down. And we want you to email those to the office or to me. And we'll circulate those to the right people and get you really quick answers. And for those of you who are here, we'll do that tonight with you when we're done with the live stream. Seven and a half years ago, if you can believe it's been that long, I became the pastor of the church. When the district superintendent walked me into the SPR committee meeting, the first and only question I remember being asked was, "Have you ever been a part of a building project?" Because we have a dream here. So tonight, more of a completion of a dream that God has given this church well before I came. And now, wonderful situation of having a significant amount of funds accumulated. And we want to go back to God's people, to the church, and get a straw ballot or a sense of where you are in terms of a survey or a response to tonight. So we can take your lead and do, kind of follow God's people into this new adventure. I'm going to say a prayer and then invite our building chair, Dave Thomas, up. If you would, pray with me. "God, thank you so much for the wonderful problem we have at this church of resources, generously given, overflowing, to the place of wondering what to do next. Even though it be during a strange and awkward time of this pandemic, we know you still have a great plan for your church and that you love this place. We pray we would follow you into the future with boldness and also with great prudence and wisdom. And we thank you, Lord, for the gift of your body, which will help to lead us even tonight in Christ. Amen." Thanks, Dave.
Good evening, everybody. So tonight, we're going to talk about our building plans, the vision that started back in 2016. And for those of you who have been around for quite a while, you know that it goes back maybe 21 or 22 years ago even. And we're actually in this facility and have this acreage here as a result of a lot of hard work and faithful work and God being faithful to this congregation over the years. So we want to kind of go back and just remind you a little bit about what we talked about in 2016. And so here is an artist's rendering of our vision for sanctuary there on the left, kind of the cream-colored top. And also a new entryway. A covered drive-through drop-off area. A large entry and foyer. Sanctuary office spaces. So this was the artist's rendering of the grand vision, right? This is the existing line drawing of the building that we're in on the first floor. You can see the middle area there is the worship center. And this was the entryway foyer. And the first level of the sanctuary addition. Is it coming back to you a little bit? Artist's rendering of walking in the new entrance foyer area, looking to the south. There through the stained glass window to the left would be entry into the sanctuary. To the right would be this existing building lobby. Lower level of the existing building is shown here. And again, the basement under the foyer entrance area. And the basement underneath the sanctuary expansion. And an artist's rendering, looking from west to east on the south side of the property at the sanctuary. I'll buzz through these here pretty quickly. So over the years, God has been really good to us. The congregation has been tremendous in supporting capital campaigns to get us to the point where we are. And if you recall, back in 2016, we paid off the mortgage. Since then, monies have been coming in through the Hope Grows Here campaign. And last couple of weeks ago, Jeff Shear announced that we had passed the $3 million mark of cash on hand in the building fund, which is a very significant milestone. And the leadership and the building committee are keenly aware of the trust that's congregation has given to us to be good stewards of that money. And we just really want to come out here and show you what's going on in our thoughts and help you help us decide what to do. So with this amount of money, we just felt uncomfortable just talking about it amongst ourselves. So that's why we've come out here. And what the next slides will show you is the impact of time and inflation on that vision that we have. So back in February, early March, before COVID, we went out back, or we went back and looked at our estimates for the entire vision. And it was $8.2 million in June of 2017. So we went to our design-build firm, our partner who designed the vision for us. And we said, "What would it be today?" And so the same exact plans in September of 2020 was $9.1 million. So that's time and inflation in the construction area. So three and a quarter years, 10% increase, or $900,000. And the Hope Grows Here campaign was a very large success and received $2.1 million of pledges. If you do that math, about 43% of that $2.1 million would go just to paying off the inflation. Now, if we need $9.2 million to complete the whole project, and you have this information, you can tell that it's going to take a lot of years to catch up to $9.2 million. And that's why we're before you tonight, is try to lay this out for you. So what we decided to do back in February was go back to the McKnight Group, who's our design-build firm. And we asked them to look at it from a phased construction point of view. They're the experts. They've built churches in the eastern U.S. for decades. We said, "How can we maybe break this up into smaller chunks where we can make progress against the overall price tag and still gain advantage for our congregation in worship space and welcoming space?" So we asked them to look at $3.5 million cash on hand as of January of 2021. And assume we'd have an ability to borrow about $1.5 million. And they came back with two proposals for us. The first one, number one, we're calling Pay As We Go. And you can see in the blue area, circle the oval there, that is that large entryway and foyer that you saw in previous slide. This would be constructing that top floor and full basement as originally designed. The interior, you'll see in a minute, will be proportioned according to the space needs that we have. And it does accomplish several of the original goals that we had back in 2016. So here's the main level view, again in that blue circle. You'll see that the part of the lobby or the entryway of the existing building has been reconfigured to include a cafe area. And then part of the space of the new foyer entryway is additional greeting area. You can also see a larger staircase there at the bottom. A key information kiosk, some conversation pits. But then on the right-hand side, that's shaded in green, that is reconfigured office space. So one of the goals, four years ago, was to get our pastors up out of the basement and get the staff all on the same level so they could be more effective in their everyday duties. And so this would be the plan for doing that. Here is the basement area of that entry foyer. And you may not remember, but it's an exact match to what you saw a few slides ago in the original plan. So the kind of the reddish-maroon color there is configurable space with operable walls. So if the youth need a large area to meet, they have a space, we can pull those walls out and have that. Set of bathrooms with showers. Why showers? Well, because there are ministry teams that come through this area and periodically use our church to stay overnight while they're going to a mission site or maybe serving in Cleveland. So having this capacity might allow more groups to use our church for those kinds of times. So number one, Pay As We Go. To wrap this part up, the estimate was $3.3 million. And that could be paid for with cash that will be on hand or expected to be on hand in January of 2021. So if we went with this phased approach, there would be no mortgage, potentially just pay cash for it. And the timeframe on that, from the day we told the architect we were ready to go, would be 15 to 18 months. All right? So the second phased option that they offered up, number two, we call it Pay As We Go Plus. So as the title kind of implies, what you just saw in number one, everything that you just saw would be part of this number two, plus about 45% of the original basement that was designed for under the sanctuary expansion. So what would that mean? Well, if you were in the east parking lot, looking over that area, you would see a roof. So it's just the basement. There's no upper level in this phase. And just want to make sure that that's clear before we move along. So here is the line drawing of the lower level that we've seen before as far as the existing building and the foyer entryway. And then the, inside the blue circle there, is that basement area that's included in number two. And so you pick up about 6,000 square feet of ministry space. You can see kind of the three rooms vertically on the left are dedicated rooms. And then in the upper part of that circle, that is the originally planned recharge space for that ministry. They were out of space then, they're out of space now. So this is a ministry room that's needed. And then that yellow area in the lower right is very configurable space. Those are operable walls in the dash lines inside. So that can be one large space for bigger meetings, or we can block it off, make it smaller for individual meeting rooms. What's not shown in here is there would be some space that would be consumed by mechanical room for the additional HVAC. So that's just not shown here at this point. And I should also note that the ceiling of this basement would be designed to the eventual load-bearing floor of the sanctuary above. So when we move forward with the sanctuary expansion, if we were to do this, all that would be required is to remove the roof, the impermeable-to-weather roof. And that would then become the floor of the sanctuary. That's the original sanctuary basin outline there, the big dash line. So the area shown is about 45% of that. So number two, Pay As We Go Plus, the estimate for that is $4.9 million. How could we pay for that? Well, with the $3.3 million of cash that we should have on hand in January, and borrowing about $1.6 million. And of course, we would probably consider another capital campaign to retire that $1.6 million early. Time estimate here is 21, 17 to 21 months after we say we're ready to go. And so the next slide is going to show you kind of what would be left. If we, if we went for Pay As We Go Plus, number two, the estimate of the full plan, if you remember, was $9.2 million in September. Pay As We Go Plus, subtract out 4.9, and we would have left about $4.3 million in today's money to finish that sanctuary expansion. So this would get us a little more than halfway there in today's dollars, right? The note at the bottom is that the McKnight Group estimates about 7% to 10% more than the $4.3 million to integrate that basement into the sanctuary expansion. So as I mentioned, the roof would have to be taken off. The office area in the foyer would be revamped to be all entryway as it was in the plan in 2016. And so about 7% to 10% is the estimate on making that happen. Option number three, we thought we'd show you the full project, $9.2 million. It would deliver exactly what we talked about in 2016. We could use the $3.3 million of cash on hand to put toward that, which would leave us about $5.9 million. Couple of things there. The bank may not loan us that much money. That's one thing that we just don't know for sure. And then it may be difficult to service a loan of that size, right? And Jeff will talk more about that later. The other thing I'll just add is that this church's average three-year campaign pledge has been about $1.8 million on average. And we would need at least four campaigns to pay that loan off in interest if we went that route. 20 to 25 months is the estimate from the time we tell them we're ready to go. And number four would be to wait. So option four is to wait and do nothing at this time, recognizing that COVID-19 is still here. We don't know what the economy is going to look at, look like necessarily in the future. And then there's still the United Methodist General Conference that has been rescheduled twice now, all the way out to September of '21. And if you remember, a year or so ago, we were talking about a potential split of the United Methodist Church over human sexuality issues. So it's just another unknown out there that waiting might give us time to see how that goes. But a reminder, and the last piece that I'll tell you, is that waiting is going to cost us between 3.4% and 4.5% per year on that $9.2 million number. And so 3.4% comes from our actual experience after, over the last 3.25 years, just crunching those numbers. 4.5% is from the McKnight Group, and that's a construction inflation number that the building industry is using today. So that means every year, another 300,000 to 400,000 could be added to that 9.2 million if we wait. Okay? So I will turn it over to Jeff Shear, Finance Committee Chair.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks to all of you for joining us tonight. If you think about, think about your home and you're considering expanding your home, there's a cost of doing the expansion project. And then there's also the cost going forward of what maybe a new mortgage or your new utilities might cost, et cetera, et cetera, of a larger home. So Dave focused on kind of the one-time project cost, these different options of building, kind of option one, two, or three. What I'm going to focus on is more the annual ongoing operating cost, additional costs that we'd incur every year after we do these kind of expansions. So you can see what happens to our current budget versus how it might grow in the future. Sorry, these numbers are a little hard to read. This will be posted online after we're done here tonight. And so you can look at these at home on your computer. And I'm going to try to highlight the important numbers here. The three slides for the three options are all going to look the same in the way of format. And let me, let me highlight what I'm talking about here and the assumptions we've made in estimating these costs. We start in the middle of the screen, kind of on the right-hand side, you see a number $1,180,000. That is our 2020 annual operating budget for the church today. Inclusive in that number already is $120,000, which is money we put aside in our future building fund every year. About 10% of our fund, every year goes into future building fund. And that's in lieu of the fact that we don't have an existing mortgage any longer. So really, since 2017 forward, instead of paying a bank like we were doing, we're now putting that money in our future building fund. So just realize that out of $1.18 million, we're putting $120,000 already, taking it from one pocket and putting it in the other pocket, just so that we didn't get out of the habit of having to maybe pay a bank mortgage in the future. So we start with that number and we say, "Okay, how would that number grow with these different expansion projects that we're considering?" Without any other better way to do this, we thought we'd apply a square footage logic. We went through our budget and we said, "Which line items, which expenses are impacted by more space?" Not everything is. Our pastors are still the same people. And, and a lot of the programs we do are still the same, but certain things are space impacted. The biggest line item is our utilities. So we have more space to heat and light and, and air conditioning, for example. That's the single biggest line item that would change. But also things like the value of our building goes up, so that means our insurance costs are going to go up. That means we have more space to clean. We pay a custodial staff to clean, so our custodial costs are going to go up, et cetera, et cetera. There's 10 or 12 line items that we identified that we think are space-relevant. And so what we're doing in these charts is just taking the additional square footage we're considering adding to the building and then applying a percent increase to that on those space-specific costs to come up with a new number. So option one, so the current facility, first and second floor combined, is roughly 25,000 square feet. That's the building we're sitting in today. If we go with option one, we're talking about adding just under 11,000 additional square feet. With that foyer and the space below, it's 10,800. So let's call it 11,000 square feet. That happens to be 43% incremental space beyond what we have today. So we took those space-related costs, multiplied them by 43%, and we said, "We can see an additional $55,000 a year incremental cost for just that additional space in our operating plan." We wouldn't have a mortgage still because we're going to pay for that first option, not a cash. So there's no incremental mortgage cost. So you can look at that and say, "Well, our annual operating cost would increase by that $55,000 year after year." That's 4.5% or so. That doesn't feel terribly uncomfortable. Our typical operating plan increases 4% a year. We're already putting 120,000 aside anyway. So we're pretty comfortable that if we did this expansion, we could pay for it. The project could be paid for in cash, and we believe we could absorb the future operating costs. And that would be a comfortable solution. So that gets a checkmark and say, "This is doable." If the people want to do this, we think this is a doable option. Next slide looks at option two. I think. There it is. So option two says again, current building, 25,000 square feet. Now with this bigger addition, now we're talking about adding 17,000 additional square feet. So now we go from 25,000 to 42,000 in this case. So that means that's about a, about a 70% increase over what we have today. Take those same space-relevant costs, same annual budget, and now that $55,000 increase you saw in the last slide, now it goes up to $95,000. But now we also have an additional mortgage line in here because if this project costs $4.9 million to build, we know we can't pay all of that in cash. So we know we're going to have some mortgage in here. I took a conservative approach and said, "What if we borrowed up to $2 million? Maybe it's a million and a half to $2 million range." I went with $2 million, based on what we can get today. If we took a $2 million mortgage out over a 20-year period at 4%, which is a typical commercial rate that we could get today, maybe a little lower than that, but in that range, that says we'd have an additional $50,000 of mortgage cost to service in addition to the $95,000 of other costs. And that $50,000 is now in addition to that 120 that we're already putting in our other pocket. So it's everything that we're budgeting for today, plus $95,000 for the additional space, plus an additional $50,000 for the mortgage that we now have to pay for. That now says our annual budget would go up, $145,000 a year in total, a little over 12%. That's starting to feel a little, a little more... That's starting to feel a little, a little more uncomfortable. Again, if we typically grow 3%, 4% a year, getting to 12 would be a bit of a challenge. That's why we're saying, if we go this route, which we could, if we go this route, we're going to probably have to launch another capital campaign to reduce that debt line as quickly as we could. Maybe over a three-year period, for example, if we did, did another campaign to retire that, that, that debt number, then we think we could, with some growth, we could, we could cover the operating costs of this option going forward. So doable, not doable completely in cash, but doable when we think this is a viable option, if that's what people would like, like us to do. Now let's look at the, the third option. And this is really what drove us back in February to go back to the architects and say, we need some other options. Because we looked at this and we said, wow, if we're going to add 20,000 square feet onto what we have today, and we know we're going to have to take out this significant mortgage of five and a half to $6 million, we just don't see how this is doable in today's monetary terms. So that means our space-related costs, we could envision going up by $135,000 a year. Then we see a, a significant mortgage line. This is a ballpark, this is an additional quarter million dollars a year in addition to that $120,000 we're already putting in our pocket. That's what it would cost to service that debt of, in this case, I have $5.5 million, 4%, 20 years, just to kind of, again, be consistent. We looked at that and said, we don't think this is doable, not with our current situation. Now, we can always, you know, hope for the fact that, you know, a small handful of people are going to step up with some significant gifts. That still might happen. All we can say is it hasn't happened yet. We've gotten a very faithful, committed congregation, and we've collected and, and, and built our cash up to $3, $3 million. That's great. That's still not anywhere close to the $9 million that we need for this project. So if we go forward with the assumption of how we got here and assume the next few years are going to be similar, we don't see this option as being financially viable. We don't think that, quite frankly, I'd be nervous that if the bank would loan us that money, how are we going to pay it back? That, that would really make me uncomfortable. So that's why we went back and said, let's give some options. This is still where we want to end up. We just think it's too big of a step to go in one step based on our current financial situation. So closing, I kind of mentioned these comments already. Option one, we think cash is available to pay for the cost of the project. We think the operating cost annually is manageable. We feel very good if the group wants to do this, we could start this project early next year and move forward. Option two, the bigger expansion would require a new mortgage of maybe up to $2 million, maybe it's a million and a half, depending on how the numbers shake out at the end. Operating cost increase would be a bit of a stretch, but we think we could manage that with an additional capital campaign. So in our minds, this is also a doable option, but it's a bit of a stretch, and we need everybody to tell us that's where they want us to go. Good news is, if we went that way, we'd be more than halfway to our, our full final build-out. So option three, which is the full project, as I said on the last slide, we just don't think it's financially viable at this time, so we wouldn't recommend it to the church unless somebody comes forward with some, some large contributions upfront. And lastly, just don't want to go over all these numbers and not, not say again how, how blessed we are, how thankful we are to all of you that have continued to support the missions and ministries of this church. And last and, and least, not least, thanks be to God for everything that, that he's blessed us with. Thank you.
Dave?
Okay, we're almost home. Wanted to just simply say and to acknowledge that these are uncertain times. Our denomination has a four-year conference called a Global General Conference, and there's been rumor and even negotiated potential splits. And now I just heard as of today that it's quite possible this will be postponed as well, and that people won't be coming around, from around the world. It would be the third time, actually, that it's been canceled. And in my mind, truly, as much as a general church, I'm not looking for direction from it about how to love well and guide the people in our own local church on some of the issues that are before us. So I feel like we're solid and know who we are, and we'll be given lots of options if this comes to us, but we wanted to at least say we're aware of this. Also, we live in uncertain times economically. There's a lot coming, and that's why we, we wanted to give some very conservative options and just sense where our church is on this and where people's hearts are. So an acknowledgement of this. And then obviously, we, we, we don't know how soon the COVID crisis will be over, when people will come back, who will come back, and even what the church will look like, how differently it could be. And maybe that even gives us time to even re-phase the sanctuary aspect of it as we go forward, but it, it just needs to be acknowledged. And we're just glad to be able to come to you at times like this and say, we have this money, we want to be faithful to the heart of our people as to how to invest it wisely, for God's sake. So you will notice then that there are four options on a survey. And if you're at home, this should be posted on our website tomorrow, or you can email us, and we'll email you either a town hall response survey, or you can find it a Google doc on our website. So we're in a town hall discernment process now. We want to get feedback from, literally from hundreds of people in our church. And we're going to take several weeks to post the live stream of this and have people watch its recording and then give us the feedback. Within three weeks, what we're hoping to do is to give the raw data back to our church, just to say to you, here's the voting process, the straw ballot, or the sense of where our church is. And then the building committee will make a recommendation to our ad board, and that could be done the first Monday in December even of this year, or we can hold a special ad board meeting and make that recommendation. But we're not talking about years down the road, but maybe weeks down the road for this part of the process. Next, the ad board will bring a plan of building to our district superintendent and our district building and location committee. It would be their job to approve or not approve our plans. And the district has this right only because our building and properties are owned by, by Jesus, actually. And then the general church holds that in trust for the Lord, and we hold a legal trust for the general church to manage the property here as a United Methodist Church. So the district eventually has a stake in the game, and they'll have to approve whatever we decide or not approve it. Once the district would approve our plans, then we would come together as a church meeting, and we'll have to do this creatively if it's during the COVID crisis, but it would call for a formal vote then that would bind and would matter. And, but by then, I think we'll have a very good sense of where we are as a church on this. But it gives you just a, a timeline that could actually go very quickly, so that maybe by the end of this calendar year, we could be saying, you know what? Our church wants to choose one of these options, and if the district approves that, we move forward and start to get permits and final drawings. And then quite possibly, as weather breaks into the spring and summer of, of this following year, we, we could, we could very likely be turning dirt. So that gives you an idea of the process and plan. Again, if you're at home, thanks for joining us. Send us your questions. We would love to be able to respond to them, but I think we're going to let you go at home and thank you and offer God's blessing to you, and then we'll open to questions here.